Members of City Council, please attend the call meeting of the City Council to be held in the sixth floor conference room, 801 Crawford Street, 5:00 PM Tuesday, November 24th, 2015, for the purpose of a public work session. In addition, you may consider a motion to go into a closed meeting by order of the mayor. Mr. Cherry?
Here.
Dr. Edmond?
Here.
Mr. Meeks? Mr. Moody?
Here.
Ms. Simmons?
Here.
Dr. Whitaker? Mayor Wright?
Here. Let me just say for the record, Mr. Meeks and Dr. Whitaker are out of town for the holiday and called ahead of time to let me know they weren't going to be here. Ms. Manager, how are you?
I'm well, sir.
Great. Good evening.
Good evening, Mayor, Vice Mayor, and members of City Council. During tonight's public work session, we have two presentations. The first is the schools appropriation update, and the second is the FY 2017 budget process. I'd like to say over the past 84 days, I have worked very closely with Dr. Bracy Superintendent and his staff to understand the expectations and relationship between both entities moving forward. Tonight, at the request of Dr. Bracy and his board, there are two appropriation ordinances on your agenda for the reappropriation of FY 2015 public works, public school funds. There are several specific classifications of funds within the school's budget. Mrs. Judy Duffy will walk us through the specifics of the ordinances. As she makes this presentation, please feel free to ask any questions relating to any parts of the presentation you may have. I would also like to note that Dr. Bracy and Mr. Seal are in the audience and others from the school board, I think the school board's chair is here, who are also available if you desire to ask them any questions. Mrs. Duffy.
Good evening, Mayor, Vice Mayor, members of City Council.
Good evening.
As Dr. Patton said, you have two school appropriation ordinances on your agenda tonight. The first is the reappropriation of the 2015 Portsmouth Public School Funds. For purposes of this discussion, I'm going to break this down into four categories: the textbook funds, the restricted funds, the assigned, and the unassigned funds. So, we're going to start with the easiest. These are the textbook funds. At the end of June 30th, $988,698 remained unspent in their textbook fund for 2015. The General Assembly adopted budget states that "any funds provided to school divisions for textbook costs that are unexpended as of June 30th shall be carried on the books of the locality to be appropriated to the school division for the following year to be used for that same purpose." I think this one's very clear, that these dollars should be reappropriated back to the school's 2016 textbook fund.
And did they give them back to us for us to give them back?
Well, this is what we're doing now.
That's what we're doing now.
Before I go into the next three categories, I would like to review the state code, the city code, and the language in the school budget appropriation ordinance. The first is the state code. This section of the state code deals with unexpended school and educational funds. What it says is "all sums of money derived from local funds, unexpended in any year, shall remain a part of the funds of the governing body appropriating the funds for use the next year, but no local funds shall be subject to redivision outside of locality in which they were raised." So that's the section that deals with the unexpended school funds at the state level. This is the city's code. It's called lapse of appropriation. What this says is that appropriations, to the extent they shall not have been expended or lawfully encumbered, shall lapse at the end of the period for which they were made. So remember the term "lawfully encumbered." We'll talk a little bit more about that later in the discussion. The last piece is the school budget appropriation ordinance. This was the ordinance that council adopted on May 27th, 2014, that approved the 2015 budget for the schools. What it says is "all unspent appropriations under this ordinance shall lapse at the end of the fiscal year as provided under Section 22.1-100 of the Code of Virginia. Funds encumbered but unpaid by the end of the fiscal year will be deemed unspent appropriations that will require reappropriation by the City Council." This language is more restrictive than the city code section that we just previously went over, and it's clear as to what council's expectations were. This was the first year that we had this language in the school budget appropriation. It was not in there before. So these three sections provide the legal backdrop for the discussion. Now let's talk about where we are today. There's restricted funds of $5.8 million, assigned funds of $6.7 million, and unassigned funds of $195,570. These are all dollars that were on the books as of June 30th, 2015, in the school's books. Now, everyone's familiar with the unassigned category. Those are the uncommitted dollars. In our general fund, we would call it the rainy day fund. That's what we call our unassigned dollars. The assigned dollars are dollars that are intended to be used for a specific purpose. An analogy is in our unassigned, or our assigned funds for the general fund, usually those, what shows up there are those city dollars that City Council has committed to the CIP. So that's what we show, just to show you what we show in the general fund. So although these dollars were reported as of June 30th, I want to be very clear before we continue, that the only remaining uncommitted dollars is the $195,570 of unassigned money.
Everything else has been spent?
Yes.
And we're just doing a record?
Spent or committed, so I'm going to go through that. Okay? The restricted dollars of 5.8 were for the school's self-insurance health claims. You will remember the schools went to self-insurance in January of this year. Optima is their third-party administrator, and Optima pays their claims. The school's contract with Optima requires them to pay a monthly fee to Optima, and they basically pay what they estimate their claims costs were going to be for the year. They pay 1/12 each month towards Optima. So this is money that has been paid to Optima but wasn't used by June 30th, meaning their claims did not come to that dollar amount. Okay? So this is a little unlike the city. We pay Optima a monthly fee for administration, but we pay our claims monthly as they actually come in. So it's a little bit different the way the contract's set up. But as of November 13th, all of those remaining $5.8 had been spent on claims. It would be appropriate, as their first year of self-insurance ends on December 31st, that we receive a status report on where they ended the year with all their health insurance plans. The city and the schools will continue their discussions on the cost benefits of combining health insurance plans.
And we're conversing now about that, you and Dr. Bracy?
Yes, we meet every week. And our teams are meeting. This coming Thursday, we'll meet at 1:00, and the teams meet with us after that. Not this coming Thursday, because that's tomorrow. I mean, that's Thanksgiving. He keeps telling me that.
Change your plans for Thanksgiving, darling.
I'm sorry. I'm sorry. He keeps saying, "You're not going to do it this Thursday." Okay? Yeah.
The $6.7 of assigned includes all dollars remaining on purchase orders as of June 30th. A purchase order is a legal contract that we must honor. These were all lawfully encumbered purchase orders where either the goods or the service had not yet been received by June 30th. Technology upgrades of $4-plus million accounted for the majority of the POs. There were other items such as uniforms, educational tools, and instruments. As of November 13th, there was $679,928 remaining in open purchase orders of the FY 15 purchase orders.
Say that again, as of when?
As of November 13th.
Okay.
Okay. This is a category where the city and the school policies and practice have differed in the past. As you know, in the city, in the general fund or any single unit fund, the city requires that all goods and services must be received by June 30th. So we have a little bit different policy and practice that we've done in the past. Our general fund appropriations lapse at the end of the fiscal year. We close all purchase orders in the general fund at the end of the fiscal year. However, going forward, all of these encumbrances in the schools will be brought to City Council's attention with the request from the schools for City Council to consider allowing these funds to be used for their committed use. For example, last May, on May 26th, the schools came to City Council and requested a categorical adjustment. If you remember, they requested that $3 million be transferred from their instructions category to their technology category. And it was for upgrades to the school. With such an appropriation late in the fiscal year, this project could not have been completed in the remaining 30 days of the fiscal year. This would be an item that we would have considered for reappropriation. Okay? The last category is the unassigned dollars remaining as of June 30th. This is $195,570. It's unencumbered funds. This is what remains of the uncommitted dollars at the end of FY 15. The school is requesting these funds to be used for the purchase of lockers for their middle and high schools. So knowing that the school budget appropriation is the same for this fiscal year as it was for last year, we've already started conversations, discussions with the school on how to best complete all these transactions in the future so that City Council's expectations will be met while allowing the school to conduct and manage their finances. So that's the part about the first appropriation ordinance. The second one is a very simple grants transfer of money from their general fund of instructions to their grants fund. The school has determined that these funds should be categorized as grant funds. Because they receive them on a reimbursable basis, and it's a Perkins federal grant, we're recommending that we allow those monies to be transferred from the general fund category to the grants category. Now, I'm available to answer any questions that you have.
Okay. Any questions or comments? Thank you, you did a pretty good job explaining that. And just for council's information, we have this item on the agenda tonight to vote on. And if any of you are uncomfortable and want to defer it, we can. I don't see a reason why we need to do that. I think we need to go ahead and act on it tonight. I would, however, Judy, would like to know how we're progressing with getting this information to council and closer to the end of the fiscal year with encumbrances and all of those types of things. It's a little disturbing to be in November talking about encumbrances from July. And the example you gave us with the $3 million in May is totally appropriate, in my view, because they wanted to do those types of things. I also understand if there's contracts that have been awarded, but the work hasn't been performed, and so you have to get the activity complete prior to making the payment. That could linger on. But I'd like to have this session that we're having here in August and not in November. I just think so...
And I think we're starting for the schools to come back with their financial reports at the December meeting. I think we'll have a basis for having all those discussions early in the process as we move forward.
Right, okay. That's good. And again, all of those things that hang out are explainable occurrences, and as long as we're all up to speed at what's going on and abreast of what's going on, we don't even have no problem with that. But we just want to make sure we hone in on that timeframe. Any other questions or comments? Anybody else?
Well, thank you. Your comments are on point, Mr. Mayor. And we just got to make sure that, you know, you have a cutoff, that the school system should have a cutoff as well.
We will.
That way you'll make sure that we're at a timely manner, because if it's not by June 30th...
It will.
You can't buy something on June 1st and expect that it'll be taken care of by June 30th. So have y'all, I see some finance committee members over there. Have y'all established some timelines?
They know. We've been together.
Yes.
So if they've done that, Mayor, I think we should have no issues. We take care of this tonight, and going forward, we shouldn't...
We won't.
We won't have this conversation again.
No.
Yes, Vice Mayor.
I was going to say, I have a lot of confidence, frankly, in what all of you all are doing now. And I applaud you for doing that, both on the school side and yours, Dr. Patton. And this is great, and the explanation is great, and I agree with you that once you understand it all, it's fine.
Yeah.
I think because the public is probably not as confident as we might be in the finances between the city and the school, I would like for you to do that one more time at 7:00.
Mayor, would you all like it?
That'd be fine.
And I just want to, to Dr. Patton and Dr. Bracy, you know, I think a lot of this is working out because of them.
Oh, that's exactly what I mean, yeah.
And so I want to thank you all for working together and bringing this together, and in a lot of ways, bringing us together. So we continue, because we're one portion.
That's it. I have, we have confidence, but we need the public to have confidence.
Still, we're looking for if we can ever get to the merging of those health plans and those things.
We're working on that. We're working on not only, we're working not only vendors, looking at healthcare, looking at how we combine certain, we're looking at everything.
Very good.
And we have a team doing that. But I don't want it to go missed, and Mrs. Duffy stated, that on the December 9th meeting, that will be the third quarterly reappropriation to the schools. At that meeting, there will be a presentation by a school representative of an update on their financial status at this point, because that is required as set by you all in going forward in the new...
Great.
Yeah, thank you.
Good job, Judy.
Thank you.
All right, Mayor, next, I will be calling Mrs. Washington up, our budget officer, for a presentation on the FY budget calendar and process going forward. And this process has been developed and worked on by not only city staff, working with school staff, working with the city clerk's office. We've been working together.
But the key word is working, right?
Working.
And together.
Together, right.
Can't leave out together.
Good afternoon, Mayor Wright, Vice Mayor Simmons, members of council. We are beginning the budget process, which is the most single important financial responsibility of local government.
You're telling us, huh?
Our budget message from our city manager reiterates these points, and she has provided some guiding principles which outline the city manager's 120-day plan. I will not read all of the message here from the city manager, but I would like to highlight some very key words that we will use throughout our process. We want to emphasize citizen and community engagement in creating the new Portsmouth. That city employees will work tirelessly to make the best decisions to achieve our city's vision. The new Portsmouth, where employees are courageous decision-makers with financial acuity, keenness, perception, and understanding in order to make our government more cost-effective and efficient. Our theme for the FY 17 budget process is "review, reflect, and refocus." Review, to take a formal assessment of all aspects of departmental budgets. Examine prior practices, processes, and services. Reflect, think deeply and carefully about our departmental goals as they impact our citizens who are our stakeholders. Refocus, focus attention and resources on doing things differently across city departments in collaboration with Portsmouth Public Schools. We're going to be looking at all areas. We envision a new process with participatory budgeting, citizens' focus, with a theme of review, reflect, and refocus. We would like to take, once we receive our budget reviews and all from the city departments, to actually go to the citizens and hold community meetings where we talk about the budget process, the services that we provide, and try to get the community gauge where their sentiment is regarding what services are important to the city of Portsmouth. We cannot be all things for everyone, but we want to say these are the dollars that we have. And with minimal growth projected for our FY 17 revenues, we want to make sure that we're providing the right services for the citizens of Portsmouth. This will be in collaboration in working with schools. We've already had two meetings where we have marketing, and we have our finance, and we have Portsmouth Public Schools that will be working side by side with the new city manager and the new superintendent to bring the same message to our citizens.
Let me just say, make sure that we clearly advertise this and try to get as much bang for this. We tried this effort probably about three years ago. We had several opportunities where citizens could come in, and we created, I think it was a Perfect City or something like that, and we broke people up into groups, and we had different things that needs versus what we could afford, and had different groups to break up. And I think I attended two of the three, and it wasn't well-attended, but the citizens that did come clearly understood the challenges that we have.
Yes.
And so you just want to make sure we get as many folks to understand that, so we're not politicizing things. If something isn't funded, or we don't move something forward this year, it could be done next year, and it's not the end of the world if something isn't done on this budget cycle. And so that was key. But it was just, it was a very good exercise that we did. We just had very little participation, and so I don't know how we...
We will get it out there.
...get that out there to get more citizens, to let them see all of the challenges. And, you know, it was actually nice discussions with whether or not you want to have a rec center or a library or something, because you had to pick one or the other, or take some deferred funds and do something. And it was some very good engagement from some of the citizens.
Right.
So it's just, again, like always, it's just only a few folks showed up for that, but good.
Don't push it.
Is that those date times and places to be determined?
They are to be determined. We haven't set those yet. But we're going to have them in strategic areas where it won't be just one minute where people can come.
All right, next.
This is just to give a preview of the budget calendar for FY 17. I won't go over all of the dates, but some of the key dates that I would like to highlight is that departments have already started working on their FY 17 budget submission. They started on November 16th. That is regarding the operating budget and the CIP, the capital improvement request. They will be due back to the budget division by December 11th, Friday, and also the CIP. And at that time, we'll be meeting with the budget team to make sure we look at cost of services. Do we need to do the same services that we're doing? Can we privatize services? Is there a realignment within departments? We're going to look at all areas, because a lot of times, we've been doing the same thing the same way, and we think we're doing the right thing. Here, we want to examine all of our services to make sure that we're providing the quality services to the citizens, but with the most effective cost measures that we can provide.
Everywhere I see department here, that include constitutional officers and instructors?
Yes, everybody.
Yes, it does.
They all get it.
I mean, it'd be nice if you could bring all these folks in a room and ask them to leave their titles out that door, and just, "Let's look at what we have as a task as a city and how we best do that." And if it's sharing of personnel or resources and all of that to get the job done, and that would be nice. I know that's probably not possible.
But we're trying.
We need to try to do it. I mean, this council is committed to looking and bottom-up this budget as to where we can find opportunities for savings because of the challenges we had. I appreciate you, manager, having those review, reflect, and refocus in your thing, because that's what it's going to take. And we've got to be innovative in our thinking and looking at things from a kind of an outside-of-the-box type of view, and not that somebody's winning or losing, whether it's a department realignment or any of those types of things. And like Mr. Cherry said, even with the constitutional officer, there are some things and some synergies that they can help each other with, with personnel. We need to have those conversations, and we need them participating.
Yes.
And we need to know if they don't participate.
Right.
Okay.
We will.
All right, very good. Yes, ma'am.
Next, we will go, there will be a budget overview on January 25th of the FY 17 budget, and this will be to provide you with highlights of how we're working with our budget process. Hopefully, at that time, we will have a glimpse of where our revenues are so that we can give you at a very high level what we think the budget gap or deficit may be.
And it may not be one.
And it may not be. We'll see. But we want to get out early in front of the process.
That's the plan.
It is the plan.
Got to think positive. To begin to exist.
We want to get out front early, and by that time, we will have looked at the service. And to your point, Mayor Wright, we are looking at services that align with the council's vision and principles so that we can make sure that what we're providing to the city, we have looked at everything.
Okay, very good.
February 22nd is the joint meeting with City Council and the school board.
Pretty soon.
March 19th, school board adopts proposed budget and requested local funding. March 29th, city manager presentation of the proposed FY 17 budget. Monday, April 11th, a city council work session on the proposed budget. And if we need to do another budget advertisement, we'll also do it on that date. Monday, the 25th, city council work session on the proposed budget. 26th, Tuesday, city council meeting, public hearing on the FY 2017 proposed budget and tax rates. And to conclude, Monday, May 9th, city council work session, proposed budget. The 10th, that Tuesday, regular city council meeting, adoption of the operating budget, school budget, CIP, and tax rates. And on the 12th, the school board budget adoption.
How many public hearings?
One schedule.
One public hearing? I would like to see that increased. I don't think that allows for much public input.
How many different...
Go back one.
Never speak.
No, that's okay.
Go back one.
Go back here.
Because we've always wanted to reserve if we need to meet more frequently as a council to discuss items. We want to have that latitude in the budget, and if we can, Bill's absolutely right, if we can give the public a couple of shots at this. But you doing what you're doing, hopefully that will eliminate us having to do this. If you're out there on the front end and inviting the public to come to your engagement activities to be able to get that feedback, and so, yeah, all right.
We're really going to engage.
Okay. Good point there.
One of the, go, were you going to...
No, you're fine.
One of the things are not in this schedule is that the city council and the school board have two each-appointed liaisons. And the liaisons are, we're looking and hopefully to start the four liaisons with the city manager and the superintendent to have a meeting at least in December before we leave out for any holidays. So we've already talked about it. We know who those liaisons are. Dr. Bracy is getting his dates. I'll be getting with Deborah to get the two liaisons, which is Dr. Whitaker and Mr. Meeks, I think. So we are even engaging them very early.
Okay, very good.
And we have two meetings in April after her presentation.
Oh, yeah, you're going to get budget comments at those meetings, you know.
Yeah.
Before we get to the first meeting in later.
You will be engaged.
All right, very good.
Thank you.
Thank you.
All right. Members of council, that...
Okay. Any liaison reports? Anybody like to make? Okay, yeah. Yes, ma'am.
Just to make you all aware, the Economic Development Authority has signed a contract memorandum to give to the city the 311 County Street Building where the, that the Economic Development Authority purchased with the idea at the time that it would be, it was the old Smithfield Foods building where our detective bureau is located. And at the time, EDA bought the building with the idea that the detective bureau would be there a while, would be leaving, and then they would sell it and then make money. Since that is not the...
Since that is not the case, and we have more city services moving into the building, the EDA is transferring the ownership of the building, has already done so, to the city.
Very good.
So there'll be no more rent payments, and the city will have it as long as it needs it.
That's very good, and that'll help in the cost savings piece with consolidating a lot of those areas. And have we, have you thought through fully the DAX piece, or you wanna wait and talk about that later?
We'll wait and talk about that later.
Okay, we'll talk about that later.
We're visiting first.
Again, that falls under this whole theme of revisiting everything that we're doing and the costs associated with bringing these things in line, so, very good. Any other, yes, sir?
Mayor, I attended the PPIC meeting this morning, and I would recommend that Randy Sturgis with the EPA was there.
Sturgeon.
Sturgeon. He's been working on that project for about 20 years, and he did a great presentation on the progress, and the progress is actually significant, where it'll probably get some land, develop a land in the process by 2018. But they're reclaiming about, probably about six acres of the Elizabeth River that has been polluted through the years, going back to the, probably the early part of the 20th century with different things. Creosote would be in the main one.
Creosote plant, yeah.
And that really offers a good opportunity for us to increase our developable property down by the Burton Station. So I would like, I would like to schedule Randy to come in in maybe January or so and do that presentation.
We'll get him on the schedule early next year.
And he said today that he would be willing to come. We'll schedule for...
And that was one of the reasons why we started the conversation last year with the school system on the Burton's Point, where they had those operations and all, because the opportunity, as you said, once that area is cleaned up, that piece is all marketable and could be commercialized and bring in revenue for the city. So, yeah, I think that's in order. Anybody else? Okay. Yes, ma'am. Oh, go ahead, Doc.
I was gonna also say, the Port Authority touched base on the boat ramp, and with the exception of a couple of plates that need to be adjusted, which I understand that'll be done during December, finished during December. And they also mentioned that they have a grants program. We were the recipient of one for the fishing pier, I think $184,000. But that's, they have a million dollars annually for cities to present projects, and I think, Dr...
You're a great candidate, wouldn't you?
We are.
Yeah, well, the fishing piers are already a recipient.
I'm on the ramp.
But...
The ramp is open on November 13th, and as Mr. Moody said, at our next meeting in January, if they don't, they're not gonna meet in December, the presentation's gonna be made on that grant process. So we're gonna have Parks Recreation, a team of city employees there, so that we can understand the timeframes and timelines and develop a grant proposal for submission. For there, as she said, there are a plethora of things that could be considered, and every year, they get a million dollars, and they spread it around the Hampton Roads area.
Very good.
So we definitely want to be in position for that consideration.
Okay, all right, very good.
I didn't mention this.
Oh, yeah, please.
You have in front of you one of the greatest pieces that we have in the city of Portsmouth during the holiday, the greatest.
That's right.
Winter Wonderland. And I like the piece where it says, "The tradition continues," because there is nowhere else, I know of, in the country where you can go into a museum, and when I visited there a couple of weeks ago, I just stood there. I guess Mrs. Perry was wondering what was wrong, but I was just amazed at all the intricate trains, the people in the trains, the this, and we are so just fortunate. And if you look in here, every day is scheduled from now until the end of December for activities and events. We're really gonna be marketing it for families, and I just told Mrs. Perry, I wanted her to come, because I didn't just want to put this without a cover on it for you to know and really talk about it.
I'm not gonna say all this in the meeting.
No, no, but you've got it, and we've got it online, and so let's just all talk about the great things this holiday in our city.
I think our citizens look forward to that. I know I do, and I am. I'm in awe every year to go and just look and see all of the things that are on display.
Yes.
Very good. Okay, with that, I think we've got a motion to go in the closed session.
Move to go in a closed meeting pursuant to Virginia Code Section 2.2-3711A7 for the purpose of consultation with legal counsel pertaining to actual or probable litigation. Such consultation, open meeting, would adversely affect the negotiating or litigating posture of the city specifically regarding the city of Portsmouth versus South Norfolk Jordan Bridge LLC filed in Portsmouth Circuit Court as case number 740CL152064-00. And pursuant to Virginia Code Subsections 2.2-3711A.6 and A.29 for the purpose of discussing the award of a public contract involving the expenditure of public funds and the investment of public funds where competition or bargaining is involved, where discussion in an open session would adversely affect the bargaining position or negotiating strategy of the city and the financial interests of the city specifically regarding existing and potential future contractual relationships with the Southeastern Public Service Authority for waste disposal services.
Second, can you tell we got a new attorney?
Mr. Cherry.
Yes.
We gotta reel him in.
Dr. Edman.
Yes.
Mr. Meeks is absent. Mr. Moody?
Yes.
Ms. Simmons?
Excuse me.
Is absent. Mayor Wright?
Yes.
We're in close, thank you.